Please.
Divide the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prove call.
If you open.
Probably. I'm here. Uh, prove the minutes.
The motion to accept.
Second. All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same. The prove the claim to the payroll.
The motion to accept.
Second. All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same, okay. Okay. Good wish.
I have submitted our request to do some renovations in the courtroom and the court office and as well as probation. So I've brought Ron down with me. We have turned around a bench in the courtroom to use as a separation between the public seating benches and the council tables. There used to be a half wall there, but when we took, when we did the carpet, um, it was taken out. So, um, and it was not in the best of shape. It was really not attractive. It was old paneling. Um, it looked really kind of techy, the new carpet. And Tim came up and, and helped us, um, make the decision to, to take that out. So it was removed. However, I think we still need that barrier between the benches and the council tables. Um, just for safety reasons, if nothing else. Um, it allows a few seconds at least if there are someone who is in the back and gets upset before they can get, you know, a reach at anyone. Um, it gets that in the courtroom, a little bit extra time to, to react. So that was, that was part of it. Um, the second part is in our court office. When you first walk in the door, there used to be an opening there to go into the office. So it's, um, a wall that was put in. It's not an original wall. Um, we would like to make a window there, um, professional glass. So they have a window that came out of the doctor's office that they were going to hold for me. Um, to be able to use like a slider glass window for court business. Um, and then, you know, shutting off the rest of the court office. That would be a safety, um, feature for our office. Plus if we shut that off, we can make a conference room. Um, if you walk straight ahead and put a door there, there could be a conference room. Um, and we had to use up the only conference room that we have really for the court or anyone in the courthouse, um, for Ron's office when we expanded our probation department. So, um, I would like to use part of my court office space as a conference area. So that's what the estimate is for that you have. Um, I know what is not included on that estimate is the cost of that window because I haven't gotten a cost yet for professional glass. I'm still waiting on an estimate from them. Um, and then the doors are not on there. Um, and that is because they wanted to try to get doors that were as close to what we already have. Maybe by looking at, um, renovation places where they've taken in old doors from other buildings. Um, and the cost of those and availability of those changes. So if not, then they'll have to use something else. But that was, the thought was to try to stay as authentic to the building as we possibly can. So, um, the renovation or the probation department is basically just putting up a wall, um, in their office to allow for an office for our newest probation officer. Right now he's sitting in the, what was, and I think still is kind of the common kitchen area. And it's right where the bathroom door is. So he has no privacy. He can't meet with people privately. And he is our juvenile probation officer. So he really should have privacy. Um, so it's just putting up a door, um, and wall for his office.
A barn door. We're just going to use a barn door or a.
Um, pocket.
Pocket door.
Yeah. So that way it's not opening up into the hallway that will do that. So that's what we're.
We could go when I look at last time this year. I got a problem while I'm working on this. Need to be done. Will be filled out. Go ahead. Will fair, say aye?
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Who, nineteen of the.
We, we now have nine positive cases. Well, we've had nine positive cases and three hundred and four have been tested in residence for Hermine County. Um, the state now is taking over all the contact tracing. So they will be the ones in contact with the patient and we're going to transition more to a resource for the patient. So if they need family doctors, we're compiling that list for that. Uh, medications, trying to help them to get it, and help them to get them delivered, things like that. So we're going to be more of a resource, but our nurse will still have information on that patient. She'll be able to contact the patient as well as the patient contact us.
Ask your question.
Sure.
The testing, is that just through, where, where do you get the information about how many people are going to test?
It, it all goes to a state website.
So every doctor in county, if anyone's been tested, is reporting that?
Yes. And some of them are still reporting them to us like our local hospital does and also valley professionals. So we're still getting testing through, but we're get, the majority of it, all of them have been negative except this positive case. This nine, one that came over through the weekend at some point.
Are those nine cases as you from beginning testing?
Yes.
Has any of them recovered and will no longer in that monitoring than the nine?
It would be all of them, but one. This ninth case has, is still.
Okay. But I mean, is that the original nine from the very beginning?
Yes. I'm, I'm giving you from the very beginning, so no.
And is it, I mean, that if our situation has not changed, you really know that?
It's not, we don't know anything about this ninth, or you talk about this patient, the ninth one?
Yeah, the patient, the ninth patient.
We, we weren't notified. There's a lot of great area. There's a new system and our nurse isn't able to log in this weekend. So she's been on with the district from the health department and they're supposed to get her, be able to log in today. So there's a lot of, it's all new.
If you get nine cases out of three hundred and three, three hundred and four people.
Three hundred and four people tested. Yeah, they are released from the health department.
They've done their.
They've already done their time.
Quarantine. The nine has?
No, eight.
Last one.
Okay. Um, and Mark and I were on the phone Friday and the PPE that we've received that the health department has right now, um, we do not have any gowns, which are in high demand. We have forty gallons of hand sanitizer.
You mean gallons, you say, or?
Yeah, gallons are in a high demand. We have, we have not received any this last shipment. And I know you said.
Yes, fire departments and EMS, that's what they're asking for too.
Um, we have like four cases of gloves. So, uh, and then we have about five hundred face masks, but they'll be going out this week.
What you got missing, how much would you need to have your room before it works?
If, if soon as it comes in, it goes out. I mean.
Are you saying how many gowns would we need?
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're short of water, how much are you short of X amount?
What would, what would a fire department go through in two weeks? And if, if you were having to go in on cases?
You can find a great cure, we'll look if I can make it, unless we've got a bad rush, probably try to get gallons a month.
How many?
A gallon per month.
One gallon per month?
Yeah, at the rate we're going right now, we're going to be, you know, city plant or someone does a lot more calls would be different. I mean, we kind of rule, we don't.
Right, where one of the nursing homes requested two hundred. So.
So you would probably want to get two thousand or so.
So three dollars a gallon, you could build adequate, you know, stock.
Would be good.
What do you bring in the other thing working with that?
Uh, I got three thousand of those KN ninety-five face masks.
But that jug, that big tank you wouldn't go, that one?
That's three hundred and thirty gallons of hand sanitizer. And then we've got some other hand sanitizer on hand set. The three hundred and thirty gallon total of hand sanitizer, which is basically just seventy-five percent alcohol. It's not like you do gel type hand sanitizer yet. My plan for that is I got five gallon buckets with lids. I'm going to put it in five gallon buckets and give it out to offices in the county courthouse offices. That should last us into the fall if we get another outbreak. Uh, we do have some gallon cans of hand sanitizer. One thing I'd like to get out, it's like for county offices and stuff that I've given gallon containers to, don't throw those gallon containers away because I can refill those out of this three hundred and thirty gallon. Three hundred and thirty gallon total weighs like three thousand pounds. It was a, let's just take a nightmare to get it here. Took some work between the county highway department and me to get it done.
Did we interrupt you?
No, that's all right. So, I mean, the PPE is coming in is best, and it goes out as soon as we get it. But if there's anyone that needs something, they need to notify us. Because like the nursing homes, as soon as they call, we try and get whatever they need to them there.
Does nursing homes have adequate stock with everything or are they sure or anything?
Gowns, they need gowns.
They got gowns.
They, last I talked to them, they had enough hand sanitizer and gloves, but we're just trying to keep in tou- in touch with them as much as possible to keep them stocked up.
And just to tell you the way this works, the health department gets a supply of, of PPE that's meant for hospitals, nursing homes, doctor's offices. And I get a supply of PPE that's meant for fire departments and law enforcement, basically. County highway workers. We've been sharing because they were getting a lot of PPE and we were getting nothing on the DHS side. So they were giving the fire departments, they were giving the law enforcement, took care of everybody pretty good. So now that we have someone that DHS side, we're giving it out to the nursing homes and hospitals also. There's a phone conference at ten o'clock in the morning at the hospitals and medical. That will let them know what we have and see what they need.
We're in state screen now, correct? Face mask mandatory, go with it. The road work impossible. This will pull you backwards the way, let the public accept by pulling all points up to the office they're going to. Four hours security screening. Day after hours, they have to capture. Two persons, you know, within time. So it's got up to a hundred. That mean, that means anywhere it goes down, not over a hundred, is that correct?
Yes. Except for in a restaurant or a situation like that where they're going into fifty percent of that.
And still maintain social distancing. So we still have to keep them. You know, if this room wouldn't hold a hundred with six feet apart, then we couldn't put a hundred in here.
We're looking at again, she needs, what it has, do you know the line? And then want to turn to look at it again. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're just following the governor's guidelines.
So, is the health board, are there any other recommendations?
Not at this point. We had a board meeting last Tuesday. Um, and he just said, you know, it's certain places, you want to make sure you mask up. It's not, you know, people are getting a little freer now. So we want to make sure that they do realize that the social distancing, the hand sanitizing and the mask need to be, especially because the mask protects you from, from giving it to anyone else. It doesn't, you know. So, and they did meet with the school super, both school superintendents were there. And the board gave them guidance, were trying to give them guidance on what next year looks like, also for graduation. Um, so it was a very productive meeting, but the board's very active. They are aware of what's going on as well as Dr. Albright. So at this point, we're following the same guidelines that you guys are.
And they did reschedule self-graduation for early July.
July, so I'll take that.
Two other questions for you while on this subject, that board meeting. Is it true that they're part of the same sanitation guide for?
Yes. Started last Monday. Kim Hawkins is our new sanitaryian.
Kim Hawkins is in?
Our new sanitaryian.
Sam, if you want to go ahead and talk about the CARES Act since it all ties together.
Okay. You can play work there, John.
It's the one with the sticky note, John?
The, uh, right now there are many grants out there or acts to, uh, to recoup money that we're spending. One of those is the CARES Act. It basically covers all PPE, anything required for COVID nineteen response. It does not cover manpower. Uh, it can cover overtime, it documented, and it can cover contracted COVID nineteen responses, which is what we have in the county person. You have to opt into this. It's an actual legal document that Tim has in front of him. Needs to be signed by him and notarized today. And then we will get it sent off and be in. Uh, another, another act that we're, it's a FEMA claim basically, so it's not an act. They have a declaration of forty-five fifteen. And that pays seventy-five percent. So we're going to have to sit down and see if there's anything covered by one and not another. And also which one we can get the most money back on. Because if you get seventy-five percent, a hundred percent, that's kind of low, right? So today Tim's got that to sign.
So seventy-five forty-nine?
On FEMA, this is a hundred percent. For allowed purposes. And also with this, it's, it's a little bit more work because every single line has to have its own claim and letter on, uh, describing why it was required to respond. Right now we are up to, and this is, it's a pretty good estimate, but we're up to just about thirty thousand dollars in claims. Without this last Friday being in it.
You have a question for Mark?
You make a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, go with the grant.
Motion.
Say it's a aye. Maybe you should.
Um, Angie in the assessor's office, Will.
IT update.
Well, as Mark, uh, was telling you guys about this, the CARES reimbursement and, uh, the stuff with FEMA. After, I do believe it was last, after the last meeting, um, Judge and Ron and Bruce and myself all sat down. And Judge got some wonderful information. And I say that lightheartedly from the state supreme court that is mandating them, the, the courts to do remote hearings with professional teleconferencing equipment. And so I've been poring over a ton of different things to see what the county needs to make that happen. Uh, the judge has, uh, some funds that are available, um, that we can kind of tap into. But in looking at, that would be mainly for like the tele, teleconferencing equipment and stuff like that. Uh, in looking at what the courthouse would need to make sure that all that can be operational, we're looking at two different things. We're looking at, um, another increase in internet speed because the teleconferencing equipment was not necessarily in, in line with what we upgraded with just not too long ago. Uh, that was more to make sure that we could do, um, all we needed to do for the new system that we're putting in right now. And, and so, uh, I've gotten with, uh, new wave fiber and to bump to the next package would double our speed from one hundred by one hundred to two hundred by two hundred. And that's an additional hundred and fifty dollars a month than what we're paying currently. We're currently paying ten fifty a month for the internet line here and that would take it to twelve hundred. Um, that's, that's a pretty cheap increase, um, in that to, to get to that level.
So that would.
It would double the speed, yeah. It would take it to two hundred, two hundred makes down and two hundred makes up.
Double speed for a hundred dollars more.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, um, which was the same, the same increase to go from the fifty to the one hundred that we are at now. So, uh, this is a little bit better bang than, uh, bang for the buck than, you know, the, the previous upgrade that we just did. But, um, in order to make that happen, the current web filtration device that we have here will not support that speed. And so, uh, I've been in talks with a couple of different companies that do web filtration boxes. And to replace the unit that's currently here, um, I can get from, the vendor that we have now is Barracuda. And to get an appropriate appliance from them, uh, we're looking at roughly thirty thousand dollars for a three-year stint. And then, uh, another competitor of theirs, uh, which I have personally used in the past. I've used both Barracuda and, uh, company called, uh, Edgway. Uh, their device is called the iPrism device. And it's a little bit more robust. Uh, it gives quite a bit more security features as far as, uh, the availability to scan a lot deeper than what the Barracuda does, uh, through traffic that comes through. And it gives antivirus, anti-ransomware, anti-malware. It also gives another feature that any device that the county owns, um, can be filtered. Unlike the Barracuda, right now, anything that's just here at the courthouse is going through that Barracuda. This, the Edgway would allow, um, that same web filtration policy to go out to all the county equipment, regardless if you're here or out. And so, uh, it's, it's a lot more robust. And I've been able to work with them directly to get a direct government pricing on a five-year license for that device runs about twenty-six grand.
Just for the licensing?
Well, that's for the equipment and the licensing for five years.
How much was it?
Uh, right about twenty-six grand.
About five thousand a year, though.
Yeah.
And the other almost thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand for three years.
So it'll be fifty-six thousand.
Well, no, that's just to go for, that was just between Barracuda and the Edgway. The Barracudas, we currently have a Barracuda, uh, in place now. And that, that price from Barracuda included a twenty percent discount from them because we currently have a, uh, maintenance contract in place with them, uh, through twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, late twenty twenty-two, early twenty-three. And so, uh, even with that deep of a discount, you know, a twenty percent discount, uh, you know, I, I don't think the product's that good to spend that much more money for, you know, the additional, you know, to get two years less over, um, the other device. And so, um, I wanted to bring this to you guys' attention so that way we can try to figure out what we need to do to accommodate, uh, what the judge needs to do from their orders from the Indiana State Supreme Court to make sure that they can have their remote hearings happen. So, um, we're going to work with the teleconferencing equipment as much as we can out of, um, the grant monies that are available from what she has available on that end. But then as far as, uh, the actual equipment and the upgrade, uh, my thought to potentially put that underneath the CARES Act as a line item for reimbursement because it is needed because of a COVID nineteen related thing. Is that the?
Only issue I see is a five-year contract.
Okay.
CARES Act, it goes to December first.
Okay.
End of years. And I don't want to continue a contract on, so you might have to get in place as equipment and service contract.
Okay. Yeah, because it's, yeah, it's licensing per, per device, uh, on that. So I can get, uh, if I get a one year, I can do a one year is the absolute minimum. It obviously is, it's more expensive that way. Um, I, I had a three-year price and I, I asked them if they could do a five-year just to get an comparison. And the three-year price was right at twenty-five. And then the, the five-year price was at twenty-six, so.
Is this one or is it out there? All counties or districts also will have?
No, this is, this is for all counties in Indiana from the state supreme court. So if you guys need to have any more questions or whatnot, please let me know. And then the sooner that we can get, uh, something moving on this, we can get stuff processed with that.
Should I get a copy of that, so three, four, or whatever? Question that you know?
Um, Judge, I know Judge has got some stuff that she's working on as far as.
I think it's available until January. So I think we have some time. And this is something that I think they're seeing as more of a long-term solution as well. Um, not just for right now while COVID is going on, but, um, especially for the larger counties who have, who may have larger caseloads, although we have very high caseloads. Um, but the backlog that is being caused by not being able to do hearings. I mean, we have almost a month of, um, you know, not completely shut down, but very limited. Um, not just by not being able to be here and have people here, but, you know, just getting things set up to be able to do hearings remotely and making sure that people who are needing to appear for the hearings have the ability to be here. Um, so, um, I think they're seeing this as kind of a, a long-term solution to be able to, to kind of get through cases that are being backed up as well. And, you know, if you have to deal with this again in the fall or next year, you know, that we are then set up and capable to keep the courts open, so.
And we would ask for additional, I believe, on that, no, why?
Probably yes.
Which one are you looking to go with?
The, uh, if, if it's allowable, uh, the Edgway, uh, with either the three or the five, if, you know, to maximize the, the discounts at that.
The five, you think?
Five, if, if it's all possible, but, you know, we'll have to, you know, there, obviously there's multiple, uh, levels of operation in that with, with as far as the reimbursement. So there's a ton of stuff we probably have to massage through, but.
Yes, I figured out the price wise, we'll jump, you know, definitely.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some official quotes already, so, uh, but, you know, if we have to go through a one year and then look at, you know, next year doing, you know, additional licensing beyond that, then.
You say quotes or are you saying, you're asking, or is that public, for people to know that?
No, I've, I, with the Edgway, I've actually worked with them on behalf of the county. EAS is not, not a broker in this. I've, I've worked to give government direct pricing on that.
Okay. Don't let me?
Um, I presented to you guys at the last meeting, the RFQ that John and I, uh, come up with for the county, and that was waiting for you guys' approval. So whenever you guys want to, if you guys want to approve that, then we'll get that advertised out and, and we'll start getting, uh, all we need on that.
You're rolling. You have a good advertisement.
Amy, I'll work with you on where we need to advertise that out.
Okay.
I'll, uh, since now, it's a paperback operation, you know, so we do our public research to.
I'm similar.
So we'll be in the paper, where else will we?
Um, I would probably say the TripStar, uh, just because of the, the locale. And we do have, uh, you know, a couple of people on tarot that are interested. Now, as soon as, you know, as soon as we make that, that good, then, uh, you know, we'll make sure that we get, uh, copies of that out so people that's already requested that outside of the advertisement.
Where you need, you need to be advertising.
Yes.
To make sure it's in general.
Yes.
Community crossing grant. Everything's fine with community crossing grant? Harry, Will, we've got a little challenge, getting started. They need to update it when it reclaims.
You guys are nine, yeah.
Okay.
Nine, yeah. I can call them very well, yeah.
Through the phones here, we'll pursue them. Generator repaired?
That was, um, brought in before the COVID started and Mr. Yocum said he wanted to look at it. I didn't know if he wanted to move on that or if you're still researching it.
Well, I, I just question the boss.
So we haven't done anything with it and we won't do anything until you formally approve it?
It didn't work at all in order?
It's just the, um, maintenance.
It's major, it's major, I think it was, we're at three thousand dollars for a month, it's worth it.
That, if that's an annual maintenance, that's actually a, a pretty decent price for an annual maintenance.
Is that just our generator? It was in your packet?
I don't get to it.
Okay. I'll just leave it on the agenda.
Because that, if you're, if you're generator, you're on that too?
No, we don't maintain the generator.
No, we don't maintain the generator. That's on the city of Clinton. And it was about five years ago, we went with a contractor in the Taylor County, and that fell apart. That company was, was just terrible.
Yeah, well, I, I want to talk about that a little bit. We had the same, they, they, you have to do, I mean, it's on the page or something, they were, I mean.
They tried to overbuild, they tried to do all kinds of stuff.
The basis of what we did that time, I thought was a very good idea. Very good idea, yeah. They're bringing all the people in the generator, all the entities that have generators, bring them all together. One person coming in, I think we saved two hundred fifty, three hundred hundred generator. And then it says, I understand it didn't work right with the vendor, but the process was put in place, and it was a great thing to have and do. I didn't know what came in, or what issue was in my mind, so, but I still think the process was right, even with the vendor.
The problem was, well, we had a place problem, the guy who was the work force.
And I, and I had the decision, or the choice of the vendor was not made by me. It was made by people of each entity that he fit. So I just brought the process there, which was good. See, if they're doing, so that's really, you know, a banner contract, which I don't want to do.
And all right, now, we see we're having ours done by do the high-grade stuff, and then they'll do the rest of the stuff on our generator. It's still a good idea, for the people, for the people.
Okay. Join the rule cut from there.
And that was in your packet of what, as well? It was eighteen twenty-two East, eleven hundred South. It's just a continuation of all the work they've been doing in the county.
At one time, Joy, I talked to them. They kind of like, one place we get a cut from it all together, we have to get everybody on board, like city Clinton, you know, all the time. Do that, you know, you would go follow that, and then.
I just, I would worry about the fee. I wouldn't want to collect the fee for the other units because then I'd have to write a check and give them their money. So I don't know if that would work out on my end.
I'm there going up the road, going down the road, it's, it's supposed to be blacktopped. I told me here to hit the line, but they were trying to do it.
Okay, I got some more. Who's Mr. Gray for, we don't schedule.
Haven't scheduled one yet.
Because I got some bills, and we talked about the grant board, so listen, we're going to do some grant.
Okay, I can put it with our next meeting on June ninth.
Okay, that's retiring July. And do we have any job description, job list, to look at on that?
We have a vague one, I think. I think we could go ahead and advertise for the job, but I think in the meantime, you need to, to specify what the duties are. So when we hire the new person.
All right, go ahead and advertise that, and what, advocate for it by the first being in August?
Well, we want to get him hired. She retires first of July. So we'll have applications here in a couple of weeks so we can get the person hired. Maybe have a little crossover.
Thank you, I'm going to stay on. I can notice if you go ahead and pay.
Always every time, that's the horse you get on the grant. You have to come for the board today? Ask anybody else, have their first one. I got a question, Senator Johnson, he's in certification, he was talking about nine-one-one signs. How does that work in what we did on the county? If we want to play a lot in the county.
What do you mean like, what do you mean by nine-one-one signs?
Location signs have in the driveway and stuff, so.
Like making people put a marker on their house? I thought we did an ordinance for that within the last year. We did one that required houses to have a, a visible house number and address that you can see from the road. And we made that enforceable by nearly any first responder that sees that there isn't a clear marking can cite the person under the ordinance, but they don't have to pay a fine as long as they just put the numbers up that are clearly visible. I can get you the text of the ordinance when I get back from August.
So right now, technically, people are required to have their numbers of the house.
Yeah, they're required to have something that's noticeable from the road, in case that's, that's where they live.
So we're here to go, Park House, but now, Mark, I got two boxes of fiberglass. Well, lattes, the latter. And we had the drive, that's for the rural area. So they take it for the star, where they drive, and it's by the mailbox, it's fiberglass. Go blue sign.
Are they blue?
Blue, yes, I know.
And researching those, I can't find blue ones anymore, but from that company, they're about nineteen dollars and fifty cents in a blank for those signs.
There's no kind of lettering on them.
That's just a blank sign, and that's a.
The Park House, they do that one time, they got the charge sign. They charged fifteen dollars, we got five or something, I can't remember what to deal with, and so we're going to go with. Or I got five, four full boxes in the Park House, that's right, to fill the drive, I just don't know whether.
So what, what you recommend?
Well, the one thing I've been looking at is, is, and I don't know how they're made. I've been pulled over on the side of the road, but you drive through a lot of other counties around here, you see signs that almost look like a street sign. Turn sideways with the numbers on it, and they're put on their mailbox posts or, or whatever. And I'm trying to find out what the cost of an actual street sign is. If that's cheaper, and we're making, we're doing those anyway in the county, and we need a lot of those too, that might be a better way to go.
Yeah, that's required down in Beaco County.
And those are usually like aluminum or something like that, where the fiberglass ones, after a long period of time, they just start like flaking away, the surface gets worn and they break down.
Or they're like stop signs, because they're collecting.
Yeah.
We've been using eleven signs. Instead of what we, fiberglass would break off when a tie pin and stuff.
So I mean, I think that would last longer, hold up longer, but I don't know what the price is on, on, you know, to compare one to one.
How, how would you determine coming in? If they, if they should have it on their house, or if they have it, I don't know, if you can say it from where they're driving.
If the, if the ordinance, and that, for, for the ordinance, John, you know, there should be requirements, like it has to be reflective at night, that it should be, there should be certain requirements for visibility. And, and, you know, if, if, if your house is a half mile off the road down the lane, you'd have to have it out by the road, by, by a marker out there. But if your house is, is seeable within fifty yards from the street or something, it's probably put by your door. I don't know how the ordinance reads.
I'm, I'm reading through it now, it's been a while since I've read it. We talked about that it had to be clearly visible from the street, or if the house isn't visible from the street, there's got to be, the numbers have to be posted to the point that a vehicle would leave the roadway in order to go back to that house. I thought we, I thought we put a reference to some stand, national standard, but I'm, I'm still looking.
You'd have to go through the nine-one-one director to get the house up, or you'd be probably, if that works.
Yes. And the, the nine-one-one director's been using his software, trying to figure out how to break it down to incorporated areas and non-incorporated areas. And he was, he was looking at it as zip codes, but, you know, in Clinton Township, half the Clinton Township houses are in the Clinton zip code. So how do you separate those out when you're, you're doing it that way?
You got to be a brown rally bird, some of that is a company address, too. Or something to be damn well, we're out pretty, something like that.
Mark, what we said is that should there be a dispute as to whether or not a number is sufficiently visible, then the party shall consult the standards of the National Emergency Number Association. So apparently there are some published standards out there that we can look at, which is due.
And Neil Costello was talking about requirements for street signs being visible, and stuff like that. I mean, my house, you can't see my house numbers at night during the day, so.
Do you want me to re-advertise the ordinance?
We could, we can revisit it if we need to tune up the wording. I'll send out a copy to commissioners and you.
I would just like to see, you know, I, I know it's an issue, it's bound to be an issue in the county. Someone trying to.
I'm going to put it on one side of the mailbox, it shouldn't be on both sides, I'm afraid, you know, because. If we're going.
Well, mailbox would probably be okay, and we're always. That they mostly put on their mailbox on the site that the mail delivery person comes.
That's a good point, that's a good point, on both sides. I'd like to see, you know, has to be an update in the county, it's always with me, and I can know. Until I got, I got four boxes, and if it's a lettering mark, you know, the box is.
There's, I, I think we did a quick count, I think the board's got some. I think we've got about four hundred in the county right now. A rough estimate, looking at total addresses in the county and, and just kind of breaking it down. I think we're looking at somewhere between fifty-five hundred and six thousand addresses. So if you look at roughly twenty dollars a, a sign, that's a lot of money to come up with.
What we're using right now, in fast life, in rural area, back to the folks. I think you'll have, you stick it on either, on each side of the side, back to the folks on each side of that one, it would be rare.
And this is, this is a nine-one-one thing, so this is the nine-one-one director, nine-one-four, should be part of this discussion also. There is a nine-one-one funding that they might be able to assist with.
You're right now saying correspondence to Derek, right, about this, but we know, we know at least, they think about that. Anything else? I got, apparently my clear day can, I'm walking, bring back a proposal, we're kind of like clear days to do, kind of like clean up this roadside, because it'd be bad trash on roadside. Not the larger, that we've done in the past, but we can get that maybe by the end.
And watch how you print that area, because if I went last time, all of a sudden we had couches dumped out there.
Both counties don't figure this out here, so we kind of went to roadside. I think we do it every year, roadside cleaner, spring or fall, and start a tradition on county. Makes a great program, a lot of people love it. I think it's not going to pause.
We're, we're doing the industrial improvement. Going to roll, we're going to come to the road, we're going to pile, the road is taking the road, so. This county, still got last week, right out. Morning, kind of going to town, this is all daylight, if they, if that went off, then we'll see what happens.
Last time.